Kind of hit the front desk there.
Don't break it.
Yeah.
Safety first.
Hi, good evening. Welcome to the February 25th, 2025 School Board of Manatee County Regular Board Meeting. I want to officially call it to order. We're going to start with our reading of the District Vision by Mr. Kennedy and also the invocation by Mr. Kennedy. So all yours.
Thank you, Chad. The district of the School District of Manatee County is that we will be an exemplary student-focused school system that develops lifelong learners to be globally competitive. I will keep moving forward with the invocation. I'm doing this.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll wait. I'll see when I see him, I'll let you know.
Okay, no problem. If not, I can keep going. I'm doing the invocation tonight a little bit differently, and that's because I wanted to honor a long-term employee of the school district named Jeff Schneiderman. Dr. Schneiderman, I'm sorry to announce if you don't know, Dr. Schneiderman passed away over the holiday break. And so, just a little bit about Jeff. He was a longtime employee of the school district. He worked here for 26 years until he retired in 2013. He was first coordinator of the ESE department. He supervised our preschool ESE programs and then moved on to be the coordinator of our Speech and Language Pathology Department. Dr. Schneiderman, who went to Florida State, received his doctorate at Florida State. He was a fierce advocate for children with disabilities. He was especially influential in teaching us all to understand the connection between clear self-expression and successful learning. It was through Jeff's passionate efforts that the learning and language, excuse me, learning and language impaired model was designed and put in place across the district. LLI paired a special education teacher with a speech-language therapist in the same classroom. As a result, countless children with speech and language needs were taught grade-level curriculum while immersed in a language-rich environment. Jeff was a lifelong educator who made a lasting impact on this district and will be missed. I want to extend my sympathies to his family, his wife Kathy, and his children, Annie and Alex. And so therefore, the, I will, I'll do the invocation myself, so if you could please bow your heads. Father God, Mother God, tonight we invoke the memory of those who came before us. We seek their leadership. We seek their wisdom as we attempt tonight to make good decisions on behalf of the students and employees and families of our school district. Amen.
Amen.
All right, if you all will please stand as Southeast Color Guard enters and we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. Southeast Color Guard is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Salee Bartolone, Cadet Major Diana Torquemado Trejo, Cadet Command Sergeant Major Gabrielle Rayburn, Cadet Captain Noel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Thanks again to the Southeast Color Guard. It's always great to get students in here, and I know we'll have some more later on. Charlie, thank you for the memory that you gave us earlier as well. So, moving on to approval of the agenda. The chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under the Agenda amendments on the February 25th, 2025 Agenda, updated February 21st, 2025, and posted to the district website, manateeschools.net. So have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second?
Sorry.
For Mr. Kennedy.
Coming up.
Any updates to the agenda? Any board members?
No.
Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of tonight's agenda. That passes five to zero. Item number seven, the approval of the minutes. Dr. Weisong.
Thank you, Chairman, and good afternoon, board members. I recommend approval of the minutes from the February 11th, 2025 School Board Meeting.
So move.
Second.
We have our motion and a second on the minutes. Any updates, board members? No updates needed. Let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the minutes from February 11th School Board Meeting, and that is approved five to zero. Item number eight, fun part of the meeting, student celebrations and recognitions. So, Mr. Barber, come on down. We got 2425 Student Art in the Capitol winner.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Board Chair, board members, and Superintendent Weisong. As you all know, it's already been a monumental day for the school district and with the grand opening of the Manatee Technical College City of Bradenton Law Enforcement Training Center out in Maiaque. So that was a great morning and a good way to get started. We have a great group of recognitions this evening. Two areas of priority for the School District of Manatee County, first the arts and second career in technical education. So, first one is the arts, and there's no better way to introduce it. And I just want to say a word of appreciation to the people who work at Manatee Schools Television. You saw them out there this morning capturing everything that took place out there. They do a tremendous job with our videos and just promoting the school district in so many ways. But we're going to start this recognition with a video.
Arts in the Capitol is a competition that happens every year for every middle school in the state of Florida. Each school district gets to pick one winner from all of their submissions, and then that artwork is presented to their state senator, and it goes to the Capitol, and it hangs in that session of the Senate of legislature for that year. Ms. Hernandez, how are you?
Hi.
I, for all of you who have never met me, which is all of you, my name is Ricardo Robinson Genal, and I am the Visual and Performing Arts Specialist for the School District of Manatee County. And we have a very, very special award today. So, Boston, your work, Snooty, is going to be featured at the state Capitol this year. Congratulations, sir. Of all the students in Manatee County, you just won this, yeah? So, for winning this esteemed competition, I am giving you a $200 gift certificate to bring art material so you can keep creating work like this. And Ms. Hernandez gets a $100 gift certificate so that she can do some stuff. Congratulations. That's huge, yeah? Yeah.
My brothers taught me how to draw, and it just started getting me into art. I was so shocked when you, like, I don't, it was so surprising when you just came in.
I know you've already met him, but I just want to introduce formally the Specialist for Visual and Performing Arts, Ricardo Robinson Genal.
Hey, good evening, board. Thank you so much for having us here today. I introduced myself on the video, but I did want to just give you a little bit of a rundown. This year, we had 73 entries from all of our middle schools within the school district. We had an independent panel of judges that ranged from former teachers to some community partners, and they sifted through all of that artwork and meticulously looked at it all. And through all of that, we developed a top 10, and then from our top 10, we awarded our seventh grader, Boston Wilson here from Buffalo Creek Middle School, the winner. His artwork was delivered to Senator Boyd back in December, and it is now hanging in the state Capitol. I received confirmation from the state Capitol two weeks ago that his work is hanging right now, and it will be hanging for the rest of the session. So, we're extremely proud of Boston and Mr. Scarborough, his principal, and his teacher, Ms. Tatiana Hernandez, who could not make it here tonight. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Boston, speech, speech.
No pressure.
Did you already spend the money? Did you already spend the money? On the art supplies?
Very nice. What was it, what did you create the art with? Like, what was it, looked like it was colored pencil, maybe?
Yeah, Prismacolor colored pencils.
Okay.
All right.
Why did you, what gave you the thought of Snooty?
That was my question, yeah.
Well, he's, he's always been like part of Manatee County, so.
Yeah. Awesome.
Well, we're very proud of you.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And some of us are going to the Capitol next month, and I will.
Yeah, we'll find your artwork.
Yeah, we'll, we'll. Maybe we can get a picture of us, then you can buy it too.
There you go.
That would be awesome.
Be awesome.
But we're proud of you.
Actually, we'd like to get a picture right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, sure.
And by the way, Boston's parents are here.
Come on, come on down.
You can go take a picture.
Get in the picture.
Come on.
Great, thank you very much.
All right.
Awesome.
Congratulations, Boston.
Alrighty. We got a really good group for you coming in now. They, I don't know if you had a chance to see some of the stuff they had out there, but it's always amazing when we talk about career in technical education. And to, actually, February is Career and Technical Education Month, so this is a way of celebrating. I'd like to introduce our Executive Director of Adult Career and Technical Education, Dr. Paul Gansmer.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Church out. School board members, Superintendent Weisong, staff. Want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to come to you tonight to celebrate CTE Month, so Career and Technical Education Month. So, career and technical education is an awesome thing for all of our students as well as our community because we have the opportunity for the teachers to be able to teach the students skills that they can use for their whole life in different aspects. So tonight, we're just going to highlight a little bit of things, and then we're going to show off to students and the teachers who actually make it happen in our district. So first of all, I want to thank you all for supporting MTC with going to the ribbon-cutting of our law enforcement range today. So we appreciate not only you guys being there today, but also all that you do to be able to help support everything that we try to, a lot of it is financial, and we appreciate that. But at the same time, it's about the partnerships in our community and what we do as a school district to support our community. So, thank you all for doing that, and we have many other projects coming up that we're looking forward to completing and being able to do that, too. So, with our department, we have myself as the Executive Director. We have Doug Wagner as the Director of Manatee Technical College. Ms. Kelly Kennedy is our Assistant Director for Career and Technical Education. We also have Ms. Kristi Clark, who's in charge of work-based learning. And we have Erin Kerper Navarro, who is our Career Pathways Coordinator. So you'll see some of them tonight. On our next slide, we have our 17 clusters that we have at the state level. So even though at secondary level and post-secondary level, we may not have programs for each of those 17 clusters, but that's what can be offered by the state. Each one of these clusters have different courses and programs, and those programs have different frameworks that we follow to be able to instruct the students. On the next slide, you'll see industry certifications, and that's one of the things that our teachers work with our students is to be able to earn industry certifications, that they can use that material, those skills, out in the workplace. And they actually get certificates, that they can take that certificate on a job interview to be able to say, I have this certificate, whatever certificate it happens to be. And then that, that business that they go to, that industry they're going to, it means something to that industry because that industry knows that those students have the skills that are needed for that certification. So we go to the next slide. We talk about articulation agreements real quick. We just had the opportunity to be able to have our teachers work with SCF teachers in putting together articulation agreements. And those agreements are where students can earn credit for the next level that they're going to. So if they're in high school, we articulate into MTC to be able to say, hey, listen, you don't have to take those courses because you've already done that at high school. Same thing between MTC and SCF. SCF says, oh, you've completed that program, so when you come over here, you don't have to redo that program. You've already completed it. So it's about taking that credit where you are to that next level. And of course, that also is a savings because as they go to that next level, if they don't have to take the course, they don't have to pay for the course. So, to talk about our programs, tonight we have Lincoln Middle School. So Lincoln Middle School is, we have it as a medical magnet, and so we have two of our teachers here. We have our principal, and we have one of the students. So the Medical Magnet Program is something that we're doing to really attract the students to the area to learn about the health sciences. Can you, can you see Mr., can you see Mr. King okay?
Barely. Can you move over a little bit?
They said they wanted him behind me, and I said, well, I'm kind of tall, but I'm not that tall. But tonight, we have our teachers. We have Krista McGraw. We have Kelsey Grabiak. And we have Mr. King as our principal, and we have our student, Carleese Charles. And out front on the way in, some of you getting a chance to see it because you come out the elevator, came in here to get into the meeting, but we do have a mannequin out there that speaks and can talk to the students, and the students can figure out what they need to do to be able to help with that, that mannequin's health. So she was out there doing some demonstrations with the mannequin. We also have a robot mannequin in the room, and I think it's Baby Luna? Okay. They call it Scary Baby Luna because it's like open, and they use the machine to be able to play. It's kind of like Operation where they take parts in and out, but it's all done remotely. In other words, they could be a doctor in New York performing an operation in California. So, a lot of cool stuff that we have with innovation out at, out there. So you have a lot of robotic technician opportunities that they can go into, as well as the health sciences. But as we continue to build the program, they'll be able to go a chance to go to high school and then, of course, be able to go to the college level as well. So can we hear it for Lincoln Memorial?
Yeah.
So we thank them for coming out and doing their demonstration for us. Our next school we have is Hale Middle School. And at Hale Middle School, they have many programs as well, but tonight we highlighted the VEX program, so the VEX robotics out front. So the VEX robotics program has been going on for many years, and we've had a chance through referendum to not only help with the program over at Lincoln Memorial, but also with a lot of our other programs, including Hale with VEX program. So we're able to do that with referendum funds to be able to help STEM move forward for them to have that opportunity. So the name of the group, the name of the team is Hail Storm Charlie. So, yep, exactly. But tonight, we have our teacher.
You love it.
Tonight, we have our teacher, Tony Vasile, and we have our principal, Irene Nikotopoulos. And we have four of the five. Unfortunately, we couldn't have the fifth person, but that's okay. I'm still going to say their name. We have Sophia Laubacher. We have Amelia Sendery, Josh Parker, Connor Willetts, and Cooper Galagos. And this coming weekend is the VEX competition that's called the State Competition. It's going to be in Claremont, Florida, and it's for the north-central part of Florida. There's going to be 70 teams there, and they're going to be there as not only a team, but individuals. And so they actually qualified seven, seven different ways to be able to get to state because they could do individual, they could do team, there's a whole bunch of different things they could do to qualify. So we're going to wish them well because if they qualify to go to the next level, they don't go to Nationals. It's called World.
Oh, wow.
And when you go to World, you have people from many other countries there. It's a great experience. But Mr. Vasile, have you been to World before?
Not yet.
I like, not yet.
Not yet. And the kids are all excited, too. So we want to wish them well, too. The last tournament they were at was in Tampa, and they were the tournament champions, so we want to congratulate them. Thank you very much.
Good luck, good luck.
Oh, yeah.
Next up on the slide, you'll see we have something called CTSOs, and those are Career and Technical Student Organizations. Our student organizations give work-based learning skills to our students within the program that they're in, but it also gives them a chance to compete, to show their skills, and to be able to see the skills of other people from around the state. Our groups do very well. We just recently had the TSA state, and I think we have about 10 groups going to national level. Is that correct? Chris, I'm asking Kristi.
Close to 17.
Close to 17 groups. So we have a lot of groups going to the national level. And typically, what we do is I will bring all the national winners of all the CTSOs back to you as a student recognition there, too. So we wish all of them that are going there. So the different programs that we have is we have DECA, and that's more for marketing. And we have Mr. Brandon Mufford from Parish Community. FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America. We have Cheryl Lisa Rodriguez from Lakewood Ranch. FCCLA, we have Tommy Gaines from Suck Middle School. And for FFA, we have Caitlin Green from Parish Community. For HOSA, we have Pamela Ron from Nolan Middle School. And for TSA, we have Kristi Clark, who works with my department at the PSC. These are the leaders in our district. They help organize all the other teachers what needs to happen for the TSOs. How do we go to state? They're running regionals. How do we get to Nationals? They're doing a lot of things. So I want to, I want to bring them to you for you to be able to see that they really are going up and above as teachers, as instructors, to be able to help our students get a great experience. So I'd like to thank all of our teachers for being here today as our CTSO advisor. So thank you for coming. We also have CTSOs at the post-secondary level, so we have it at MTC. So we really only have two of them at the post-secondary level. We have HOSA and Skills USA. We do have some students at secondary doing skills, but it's not a lot. But we have it mostly at the post-secondary level. So tonight, we have the co-advisors for HOSA. We have Dr. Susan Merk, and she's with, she's our pharmacy technician instructor. We also have Linda Chamberlain, who's our assistant coder pillar. She does online as well as in-front teaching as well. And I need to say this to everybody. Hopefully, you recognize her because she is one of our finalists from the Teacher of the Year. So we want to congratulate you for being a finalist. We also have co-advisors for Skills USA. So we have Colleen Maynard, who's one of our assistant directors. We also have Tom Saxton. So Colleen told Tom, you need to stay at the school because I'm going to the school board meeting, and Tom's like, all right, I'll watch it. So we appreciate both of them for being our advisors as well with all they do. So thank you very much. So, another program that we have that we want to highlight at MTC is our automotive program. So our automotive program has to go through a stringent accreditation process that has to be done through ASE, which is the Automotive Service of Excellence Programs. And what they do is the ASE goes to the different places to find things that each of the programs need to work on to be able to earn that accreditation. So when the group came out, it was very difficult for them to find any challenges to the program that we have. In addition to that, the teachers have to do a great job with the students to make sure that the students achieve and that they're able to get the certifications. So we want to celebrate our automotive technician program and our three teachers. We have Jose Castero. We have Craig Jackson, and we have Josh Sosa. And they received a certificate of accreditation and from ASE, and this is achieve the highest level of Master Automotive Service Technician Accreditation. And again, it's not highly earned from different programs. And again, this is another way to be able to say that MTC does a great job, and Manatee County is a leader in what we do with CTE. So I'd like to congratulate our three instructors for such a great. So with the CTSOs, as I finish up, CTSOs aren't only about earning certifications. They're not only about competitions. It's also about leadership. So tonight, we have student leaders who are a part of our CTSOs. I did not bring all the student leaders from each of our programs in our schools because then you'd have more people than we have here tonight. So these are actually state-level leaders. So as I announce their name, they'll raise their hand so you can see who they are. So we have Ivan Alaman, who's a state president for TSA, and he's from Southeast High School. We have Sophia Nowicki. She's our state vice president for TSA. She's from Braden River High School. We have Benjamin Barr, who's the state treasurer from Palm Meadow High School with TSA. All right. And then for FFA, we have Jacob Zinkin from, he's District 10 President from Braden River High School, and that is for FFA. And we also have Emma Spivey. She's District 10 Secretary. She's from Parish Community. So we thank them for all that they do. I did not put it in the PowerPoint, and I apologize to the student already, but we also have Madison Goodwin. She's the president-elect for FCCLA, and she's from Lakewood Ranch High School. So let's give a round of applause for our student leaders. In the next slide, I have some of the highlights from last year. So last year, at State Competition for TSA, we had many, many schools and many individuals that do a great job. And then as we get some of the state results and they go off to Nationals, we'll report back to you about how they're doing at the Nationals level. But Manatee County CTE students are receiving an impactful education that provides the foundational skills that are relevant to real-world careers. And at MTC, MTC's vision is to meet and demand the training for MTC to have expanded its offerings to over 50 programs. Many programs can be completed in a year or less without getting student loans. So we always say, career in a year. So from all of us to all of you, we want to thank you for your support of CTE in our schools, both secondary and post-secondary, and we look forward to reporting many great things coming up in the future. So thank you for having us tonight.
You guys for being here. A picture. We might need a few.
Tried touring with Mr. King. When I tour with Mr. King, I'm like, he bends down and talks to me.
He and I work together hardly. We're the two public people on here for a second.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I love it when the kids come.
I do, too. Best part.
All right, let them go. Great stuff happening in our schools. No doubt about it. All right, so moving on to public comment. Doesn't look like we have any public comment this evening. So we'll move on to item number 10. Ms. Sellers, with your reports and presentations, the presentation regarding the Manatee County School Board's 2025 Credit Ratings.
Yeah. So Business Service.
So, Business Services also has a little bit of good news to share with the board tonight. With new, um, credit ratings do occur when you have new debt issued. So, on February ten, uh, Fitch Ratings, uh, issued some upgrading ratings, uh, rate, uh, ratings on this district's, um, uh, debt categories. The long-term rating for the newest COP series that is going to be issued, uh, with pricing occurring next week, was given for the Series 2025A, an A+. The Outstanding Certificates of Participation was, for the existing COPs that the district has, was also upgraded to an A+. And the Issuer Default Rating, IDR, that was also upgraded, but to an, uh, uh, upgraded to a double A-. And the Outstanding Sales Tax Revenue Bonds were upgraded to a double A- as well. And the rating outlook for the district was upgraded from stable to positive. And then, the next day, on February eleven, S&amp;P Global issued ratings, uh, for the Certificates of Participation COPs, Series 2025A, to an A+ as well. And they also, uh, issued that the outstanding COPs that had been upgraded in 2023 remained at an A+. Typically, um, these, uh, particular rating companies, if they're issuing upgrades, do it every two years. So, or every two, um, certificates of participation, whichever is lesser. So, uh, their upgrades occurred for the rest of our, um, the district's debt back during the issuance of the 2023 COPs. Uh, the, uh, rating outlook remained stable with the district, uh, for, for the, um, district as well. So, um, this reflects, like, the board's trend of stable finances, the economic growth, and our low debt burden. So, I just wanted to be able to, um, give you this information, uh, uh, tonight. And, again, the pricing for the Certificates of Participation for the 2025A Series will be next week, with, um, pre-closing on March eleven and the closing on March thirteen. And those are for the construction projects of the two elementary schools at Artisan and Ry Branch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, yeah, one quick thing. Rachel, just for the, for the general public, if they're watching this, just so they understand, the, um, and just so I understand as well, um, the, uh, to be upgraded to an A+ or a double A-, that doesn't really affect the interest rate that we pay, but it, it makes it easier for us to sell the bonds on the open market?
Correct, correct. So, um, and that's why they make these credit rating issues occur right before the pricing.
And then, from pricing, which will happen next week, um, what do you think will be the, in, in how much time will it take? I know you never know.
Well, one week is the closing. So, the actual pricing occurs literally within two hours of, of the pricing, and, um, that will happen on March fourth.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize it was that fast.
So, the closing, uh, will occur then on the thirteenth of March, and then, right after that, is when the funds get transferred to the district.
Okay.
And remember, back in May of this past year, we did do the reimbursement resolutions to all expenditures that have been made since that time, related to these two construction progresses, uh, of projects, will then be able to be, will file for reimbursement from the COPs issuance. It's exciting.
Yeah.
Well, congratulations, though. I mean, you know.
Yeah.
Congratulations, uh, you know, obviously, if we're, if our ratings are going up, somebody appear, and the people that work for you are doing something right. So, keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Alright, um, moving on to item number, uh, eleven, the consent items. Uh, Dr. Weisong?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the consent agenda for the February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five school board meeting.
So, moved.
I'll second.
Alright, you have motion and a second, um.
I just wanted to point out one thing.
Okay.
I'm not pulling or anything. I just want to commend HR for modifying the report of, uh, the attachment. If you look at that, it's a little more detailed. And I just wanted to point that out to HR, to thank them for that. I've asked for another little tweak on it, but I like this format really well. It's more, uh, information in one spot. I just wanted to do that. Thank you.
Alright, uh, nobody else is up to speak, so let's go ahead and vote on the consent items for this evening. And the consent items passed five to zero. Alright, moving on to, uh, new business, non-consent items. Um, item number one, fourteen point one, Dr. Weisong?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval to initiate revision of residential attendance zones per school district of Manatee Policy, uh, Manatee County Policy five-one-two-zero dot zero-two.
So, moved.
Second.
Alright, we have motion and a second. Dr. Weisong, if you want to explain to, um, the public and folks watching, what this, uh, this item is?
Certainly. Thank you, uh, Chairman and board members. Uh, Policy five-one-two-zero dot zero-two, uh, is titled Rezoning of Residential Attendance Areas. Uh, this policy, uh, requires me to periodically review, um, multiple variables, including student enrollment in our district-operated schools, facility utilization, uh, and projected growth, uh, within the school district of Manatee County. Uh, the staff began that review, uh, in, uh, October of two thousand twenty-four, using our fall enrollment data that was sent to the Florida Department of Education. Uh, that review, um, uh, took, uh, really several weeks and months, uh, as we, uh, considered, uh, all of the potential data. And, uh, ultimately culminated, uh, in a, in a comprehensive, um, presentation of the data that was used in the review. Uh, and, uh, board members, you received that presentation at the workshop on February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. That was a, uh, five-and-a-half-hour, uh, presentation that you endured. Thank you. We obviously won't repeat that this evening, um, but, uh, that workshop, uh, was public. Uh, it is, uh, recorded. The video is posted on our website, uh, along with the slide presentation, so that the public has access to all of the same data, uh, that you do. Uh, the key slide, uh, from that, uh, large presentation, uh, is currently on the screen, and those are the five, uh, findings, uh, from the review. Uh, specifically, that, uh, our enrollment, uh, continues to climb, even, uh, with families having additional school choice options. We currently have two mini-district-operated schools that are classified as over-capacity, near-capacity, or nearing-capacity. Uh, and these schools, uh, are spread, uh, really throughout the county from a geographic perspective. We find that school choice options are not sufficient to remedy those capacity concerns, primarily because of, um, traffic congestion and transportation limits, um, that, um, prevent us from using schools with capacity, uh, to relieve those that are over-capacity just through school choice transfers. Um, next, uh, as you saw at the workshop, uh, future residential housing growth, um, is going to further constrain capacity in at least two of the county's four school service areas. And finally, the newly constructed, uh, facilities and schools, uh, that you have authorized, uh, necessitates, uh, that we build, uh, new residential attendant zones, which means the adjustment of existing attendant zones. Um, so, those were the five findings, uh, from the, uh, workshop held on February fourteenth. Um, and therefore, my recommendation is to initiate the rezoning process, which will include both new attendant zones and, again, the revision of existing attendant zones. Three key pieces of information, probably the most important pieces of information, uh, for the public. This will be a very transparent process, just as we've provided, um, all of the data and answered all of the board's questions. All, all of that will be, uh, uh, is posted online. Um, second, there will be many opportunities over the next six to eight months, uh, for public input in the process. And finally, uh, and, and perhaps most importantly, um, none of the changes that are made in this process would take effect until the two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven school year or later. So, nothing that we will be looking at this spring affects attendance zones for next school year. We're just getting an early jump on the work that needs to be done for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, so that we have lots of time to consider options and talk, uh, with one another in workshops and board meetings, and, and get that very important public input. So, that's my recommendation, Chairman.
Thank you. Um, real quick, um, I know that, that we've talked, just so the board knows, we, Dr. Weisong and I spoke, um, this week, there were some things that we asked for during the presentation that we'll be getting. Secondly, Dr. Weisong, you talked about it being on, and maybe this is going to be covered, so I don't want to jump the gun here. This may be covered by, uh, Mr. Chapman, perhaps. I know we talked about everything being compiled as one on, on the website. Do we have that ready to give to the public on where to find that on the website?
We, we do, Chairman. So, if the board approves, uh, the recommendation, uh, we'll ask to make a brief presentation just with the next steps.
Awesome. Alright, um, I don't see any board members that up to speak. So, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the authorization to initiate the revision of residential tenant zones, and that passes five to zero. So, I know, Mr. Chapman was next.
I'm, I'm going to take the first part while Mr. Chapman, uh, comes on down. Um, so, the first step pursuant to five-one-two-zero dot zero-two is that, uh, the staff is to hold, uh, a public meeting, um, for the purpose of explaining, um, why it's necessary to, to rezone, what that process is, uh, and to take, um, public input. In the interest of transparency, board members, we're, although the policy only requires a single public meeting, we're actually going to hold five, um, on different evenings, uh, at different high schools, uh, and, um, uh, ensuring, um, geographic ease in terms of access for families. Those five public meetings are actually, um, we've already confirmed, uh, dates, times, and locations at the high schools. Uh, those meetings will start next week, uh, and, uh, they will be completed before spring break. Again, we will not be looking at any specific maps or revision proposals. This is really an information meeting and a public input opportunity. Uh, and the presentation that's made by staff at those meetings, it'll be the same presentation at each meeting, uh, and we will, um, post that, uh, on the website as well. So, that's step one in the process. Uh, our intent, then, is to come back to the board at the workshop on Friday, March fourteenth, uh, and, uh, share, uh, what we learned, uh, what will summarize, um, uh, both the presentation that was made and the public input that was given. Uh, and then, also, on March fourteenth, um, based on my conversations with the chairman, we'll address some of the data sets that the board requested at the February fourteen workshop. And then, we'll also, uh, address some of the topics, um, that individual board members, um, uh, indicated they were interested in having more board discussion about. And that will hopefully give the staff the guidance, uh, that we need to begin the, um, map, uh, uh, revision process. So, that's kind of the first step, again, these public meetings. Uh, and, um, the other piece tonight is the communication plan. And so, yes, we have a webpage, uh, that we're prepared, uh, to go live to the public. So, Mr. Chapman is going to walk you through that, and then also show you the dates, times, and locations of the public meetings.
Mr. Chapman, can you take down?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. It's all right. I can go as Dr. Paul Ganz. But, uh, yeah, I think on, um, MSTV is going to put up some more slides here, uh, to this evening, like the superintendent said. Um, the, uh, our district website will look like what's on the screen, uh, with the main, uh, slider there being, um, on our main page. Uh, so, uh, uh, parents, families, community members can, uh, get the information, uh, right there on our district website. They can also go to, um, uh, www dot manateeschools dot net backslash rezoning process, all, all one word. Uh, like the superintendent says, this is, this is the time to talk about the process, uh, that, that, that is going to happen, uh, and, and, and nothing more than that. So, when you go to that website, you can click on that yellow box, and it will take you to the next slide, um, which, uh, details where these, uh, community meetings, uh, will be held, and, and the times, and locations, and dates. Uh, also, uh, easy access to the, uh, February fourteenth, uh, board workshop, where, uh, there was a very comprehensive, uh, presentation by, uh, the team. Uh, there's some sixty-one slides of information. So, uh, that's on there, the video of that workshop, uh, so that, again, uh, 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 Manatee County residents can, can learn more about, uh, what this is all about. Uh, there's also an, a yellow button on their public input that leads right to our, uh, Let's Talk, uh, app, where, uh, people can put in their, their input, their thoughts, their suggestions, their questions, uh, and we'll compile those and, and get right back to everybody. Uh, and if you look at the next page, uh, that is kind of what, what the Let's Talk page will look like. Uh, very easy, simple way to communicate with, uh, not only about this subject, but, uh, other, uh, uh, areas of, uh, of the district. Makes communication very easy, uh, in getting your answers. And then, the last, uh, slide is kind of, uh, just a summary of, uh, of where these meetings are, uh, like the superintendent said, over the next two weeks. Um, and, uh, how those meetings will work is, um, uh, essentially, there'll be a presentation, uh, and then, um, uh, some directed, uh, Q and A from the, from the public, so we can gain that kind of input. But there'll be several ways to, the public can make input there at those meetings. Again, they can make it online, uh, through, through the Let's Talk, uh, app. And, again, uh, anybody interested in this, to go to manateeschools dot net backslash rezoning process as we begin, uh, this, uh, this process. Any questions?
Thank you. Um, I do have a quick question, um, and this probably isn't for either one of you two, it's probably for legal. Uh, I know we, we spoke, spoke about this, um, and this is for Mr. Di. Um, as far as these meetings go, I don't know what the board wants to do, if we want to go to these meetings or not, or if anybody's even thought about it. But I just want some direction from you first. More than one board member at one of these meetings, et cetera, you know, that sort of thing, um, because we don't want to get in trouble with sunshine.
At the, at the meetings, will the, will there be a staff presentation to the public?
Yes.
So, the.
Very, very similar to what was presented on February fourteenth at this board workshop.
And, uh, we're advertising these on the website, correct?
On the website, also, uh, a connect ed will go out tomorrow to, uh, uh, parents, to inform them that the process has started.
If, if the board just attends and listens to the exchange, will, will the public be able to ask questions and participate?
Yes, yes. The goal, the goal of the meeting is to, for the dis-school district to provide information to the public and for us to receive public input.
Okay. Yep. Uh, we concur, uh, board members can attend and, and listen, uh, and we should add that to the notice that, uh, two or more board members may be in attendance.
Okay, good.
Is that good?
Thank you.
Yep.
May not happen, but who knows? Yes.
Um, I figured I'd just go to the one in my own district, and that way, I wouldn't have to worry about running into anybody at anybody else's.
Yeah. There's both, there's some that are not, though, in everyone's district, so.
Exactly.
There's multiple, like, you have two districts. You have two schools in your district, so, um.
Can we go back to that slide?
So, yeah, what, if you want to go back to what slide?
That slide with the dates.
Yeah, if you get the slide with the dates on it.
Back on there? There you go.
Yeah, perfect. Or, excuse me, I guess it's Mr. Tatum that's got two.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Tatum has two. I, I just have the one. Well, there are five. We could each pick one.
Uh, I mean, I'm not worried about it. I'm not, I'm not worried. If, if we're good to go, we're good to go. I mean.
If we, I mean, if we want to have a presence.
I'm certainly not going to answer any questions there.
Yeah. If we wanted to have a presence, I was just saying, we could each make sure we picked one and, you know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have my calendar in front of me to know exactly which one, so, um.
Attorney Dai, if, if there are more than one Board member there, as long as only one Board member speaks, that would not be a Sunshine violation? As long as there's no dialogue between the Board members, we're, we're okay, right?
Yeah. The, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have private conversations with each other.
Right.
Outside of everyone else.
Oh, sure, no, we always have to be mindful of that, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. The appearances of.
Yeah.
Conversations, yeah.
Probably the main point would be to listen, I would think.
Right.
If that made you.
I agree. Thank you.
Ms. Brer?
My question was basically, because we did a long drive out to the shooting range today, and we could see all the houses in development going up. Is any of this being communicated by the? It's all right. To the builders that these community meetings are going on? I mean, we have people buying homes that are coming down from out of state, so I don't know if that is being communicated at all to them?
These meetings are open to the public, so.
Okay.
It's not a, you know, we welcome anybody who, you know, wants to attend and learn about, you know, what this process is about. And again, I would remind, you know, those who are listening, this is, this is for the 26-27 school year.
Right.
Not, not the school year coming this August, which is the 25-26 school year. This is for the 26-27 school year. So, this is a good time to, you know, come and listen and, and again, learn and begin this process with us, so.
So, the presentation that you do at these meetings will be posted, deck or whatever?
Yes, yes, and again, it will, it will mirror what you, what was presented publicly at this Board, in front of this Board on February 14th at the Board Workshop.
Right.
It just won't be 61 slides, but it will be somewhat close to that, but, but it'll be a very thorough presentation so that some good information is out there to the public.
Okay. So, I would say, anybody listening, if your HOA is out there and our new HOAs are forming, look at this, or send somebody from your HOA.
And, and again, they can listen to the Board Workshop that was on February 14th, or look at that slide deck as well, so there's plenty of opportunities to, to get the input and gather the input.
And the reason I'm asking this is because people have asked me about, I put a deposit down, how do I know if I'm going to be zoned to that? Don't know. I can't guarantee that. You have to stay engaged with the community. You live up there, but you're moving here, so, and that's what I say in HOA, if they could even advertise it, or we just need to tell them so.
Great idea, and again, with that Let's Talk app, they could always put in a, hey, I'm Kevin, and I'm moving here, and here's my new address, and what school will I be going to, or how do I enroll my child? We get those all day long, and we answer them right back, because we do, we encourage anybody here moving to Manti County, whether they're here now or coming here tomorrow, to enroll their children in our schools as, as fast as they can, and we'll take care of them in the best way, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yeah, Kevin, two things real quick. One is, you know, from, from previous meetings like this and rezonings, it, memory serves, if memory serves correctly, one of the big questions from parents, there was, with some there was a concern that their child would be moved while they are matriculating through elementary school, for example. Will we be able to tell families that their child will not change schools while they are going from third to fourth grade, for example? Are we not prepared to do that?
I think this, these meetings are really just to be informative of the, of the process. We can, we are going to review our policies, our 5120 set of policies when it comes to those issues, so if those questions do come up, we'll be able to answer them accordingly to our Board policies on those issues.
Okay. We'll definitely hear that one. And then.
Can I, I just want to expand on that, and, because we, we actually talked about this last fall in a workshop when we worked on the opening plan for what became Lake Manatee K-8 and the Harvey K-8. And those that were on the Board, if you think back to that presentation, we talked about the fact that the reason we were not immediately establishing new attendance zones at those two schools was because we were scheduled to open two more elementary schools in August of 2026, and so we needed a creative way to get those schools open and populated, that if we drew attendance zones at that time, we would likely be redrawing them again the following year, and so that's why we did this voluntary reassignment plan. Now that we're in a position where in this process, we're going to draw multiple new attendance zones, and we have significant overcrowding at several campuses, we have to work through the entire process, but no, we can't start by guaranteeing that people won't be changing schools in 2026-27. In different types of rezonings, it may be possible to do that. In this particular use case, it is likely not going to be possible to guarantee that. It may be possible that as we work through the process, there may be certain things that we can do or address in certain areas, but in other areas, it may not be possible to do that. Keep in mind, Board, that, and the timeline is published in the action item, the goal is to wrap this process up by no later than September of '25, to take effect '26-27, so that families also have the full school choice enrollment period, including the hardship and appeals processes to try to address individual circumstances. But, but no, this rezoning is a little bit different, maybe, from, from prior ones. There are some specific exemptions already in the policy that the Board approved last fall when we updated, and we'll go through those exemptions upfront in these public meetings so that people know who is exempt from movement by policy and who is not. And then as we go through the map revision process, then things will become more clear about what we may or may not be able to do for '26-27.
That helps. You're going to get that question a lot, but that's.
Yeah.
I appreciate the transparency and the openness about that.
And that's a good point, Mr. Kennedy, that these, again, these meetings are informative. They are not, we're not going to be making decisions at these meetings.
Right.
So, I know parents may be asking, just like you did, you know, what about my two siblings, you know, my two children?
Siblings.
You know, but that will be, you know, a couple steps down and along the process, and that's where they'll learn the process and the timeline at these meetings. And again, we'll come back to the public, like the Superintendent said, further down in the timeline with, with meetings, again, to present where those decisions might be, might be make, might be happening in some options of mapping, so. But right now, these are just to learn the timeline, the process, where can I get information, how can I get involved, those, those kind of things, and maybe why is this happening, you know, what school year, you know, all those kind of things. So, this, I think they'll be very informative in that, in that way, so.
Thank you. All set.
All right. That's all we got. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep, Attorney Dye?
Chairman, just a couple other things as we, as we talk through that. First of all, the five meeting dates that we showed and the URL for the website, our webpage, once it's live, it'll either be live later tonight or tomorrow morning, that will be sent out by the district to parents via email and callouts. We'll also ask schools to place on their social media so that we get widespread distribution, along with a reminder that the content at the five meetings will be exactly the same, so you don't need to go to more than one, because it's the same, same presentation. So, we also will send, we'll send a message on our community leaders' distribution list so that various individuals who interact with the school district have noticed that this process is underway. The presentations will also include an overview for parents of the planned school start time changes for 2026-27 as required by Florida law. And actually, the statute specifically requires us to inform parents, families, and the community about the potential benefits of later start times at middle and high school. We will also be providing our families with information about the repeal bill that's been filed, so that they're aware of that as well, because as we discussed at the workshop, the, these are, these processes are on parallel tracks, new and revised attendance zones and revised school start and end times being implemented at the same time. And so, we're going to, we're going to talk about, you know, both concepts as we move along throughout the process. And finally, again, just to, just to reiterate on the meeting format for this first round of public meetings, again, we'll condense the big slide deck that you saw to something smaller. The policy also requires us to discuss the parameters that the staff will use to generate map proposals. Remember that pursuant to the policy, the staff has to generate at least three proposals for posting, for future public meetings, for public input, and for feedback from the Board, and over time, we'll narrow that down to a single recommended map, but we will generate at least three, likely more than three, proposals. And so, there'll be, again, future opportunities for public input. Our goal at this first set of public meetings is, is to give the exact same presentation and then to take Q and A in a process that allows us to capture that Q and A and then put out an FAQ document for anyone who can't attend any of the five meetings. So, all of that will be part of the process of this first round, and Board members, again, we welcome your attendance and appreciate Mr. Dai's clarification. We'll update the, the meeting notice with that information. We do not currently have time in the agenda for Board members to speak, and I would recommend not doing that in case there's any kind of inadvertent, if two of you are there and one shares a thought, I, again, I don't want to run into an inadvertent sunshine issue that becomes the basis for a challenge of a Board decision down the road. So, so that, that's the plan for those meetings, and again, as, we will ultimately post that deck and the FAQ document for those that can't attend one of the five public meetings. We also intend, when it comes time to do the, the actual presentation of maps and strengths and weaknesses of each plan to the public, we plan to use the same five meeting sites the second time around, just so people get used to meetings at those locations. Thank you.
Thank you. Good stuff. All right. So, that pushes us to our updates this evening, so we'll start with instruction. Mr. Jensen, anything from you?
Thank you, Chair Cho, Board Member, Superintendent Weisong. As we're exiting February, February and entering March, we have a few required instruction topics as required by Florida Statute 1003.42 that we cover as part of our K-12 curriculum in March. One of those is Women's History Month, which was established to celebrate the contributions of women that have made to the United States and specific achievement women have made over the course of American history in a variety of fields. Through courses in our students' K-12 progression, students will receive instruction recognizing the contributions of women to society. We'll also be recognizing Medal of Honor Day on 3/25. This is observed to encourage patriotism, remember the sacrifices that veterans and Medal of Honor recipients have made in serving our country and protecting democratic values worldwide. Instruction must occur honor before Medal of Honor Day, Veterans Day, and Memorial Day throughout the year. The Secondary Science Fair Award Ceremony was held on Thursday, February 20th. It was a really cool event. We had lots of brilliant student researchers who are much smarter than me there. From our regional fair, we're going to be sending 20 total students, nine middle schoolers and 11 high schoolers to the Florida State Science and Engineering Fair in Lakeland, which is March 25th through 27th. Additionally, Caitlin Cook from Southeast High School received the grand award for high school students, which comes with entry to the International Science and Engineering Fair.
Go Noles!
That's in Columbus, Ohio, May 10th through 16th, where she will compete against students from 75 countries around the world. And to show that Caitlin is much smarter than I, I will read her project title, which is Agricultural Runoff: The Effects of Types of Fertilizer and Application Methods on the Amount of Nitrites Released from Capsicum Anuum, which is bell peppers. As Dr. Gansamer referenced in his presentation, his CTE presentation to start the Board meeting, this weekend is the state competition for VEX and Claremont. Saturday's our elementary competition, Sunday's our middle school competition, and teams will have the chance to qualify for Worlds. We have a lot of amazing student roboticists in our, in our school district. We're sending teams from the following elementary schools, Braden River Elementary, Freedom, Harvey, Manatee Elementary, McNeil, Mills, Rogers Garden, and Willis are all participating.
Wonderful.
And we have several middle schools participating as well. Braden River Middle, Hale, Mona Jane, and Nolan are all participating, so we will have lots of students repping Manatee County here in Claremont, Florida. And then, finally, I just want to thank Dr. Gansamer and the whole ACT team for, obviously, their dedication to promoting career and technical education in our district and getting some pretty incredible outcomes from students in our TSA state competitions, DECA, and all the other CTSO state competitions that they participate in. But beyond all of that amazing work, he wanted me to remind you to mark your calendars for Saturday, March 8th, from 11 to 3 for the annual Parish Festival and Chili Cook-Off, where MTC and several of our secondary career and technical education programs will be presenting their prized chili, so. Another example of how culinary arts is shaping our community. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Mr. Noddy?
Good evening, Board Members. Dr. Weisong, I'll give you a little update on human resources. We had our operational job fair on February 20th. We had 46 total attendees. Job offers were made to six custodians, four food service workers, and transportation is presently working with six candidates to get them through the permitting process. A virtual teacher para-job fair will be held on February 27th. Keep in mind that this has been moved from March 5th, so we've moved it forward in order to address the hiring cycle for teachers that we go through in March. The next operational job fair will be held March 27th at the Wakeland Center, and that will be in person from 9 o'clock AM till noon. Food and Nutrition Services on February 20th, Food and Nutrition Service partnered with SUG Middle School in the FFA to make southern green beans. The recipe was provided by Roxy Blackweller, who is the cafeteria manager there. The students grew, harvested, washed, and snapped the green beans. To make the recipe, the green beans were seasoned with pepper, minced onions, and combined with roast potatoes, and my favorite, bacon. The culinary instructor at SUG, Chef Gaines, said that they were the hands-down the best green beans he has ever eaten. Food and Nutrition Service will be celebrating National School Breakfast Week starting on March 3rd through March 7th. Students will be trying some new breakfast items, including special cereal topped yogurt parfait and jalapeno jammer breakfast sandwiches, so those sound good. The National School Breakfast Week celebrates the importance of the role of breakfast for our students in supporting education, increasing concentration and alertness, standardized test scores while decreasing tardiness and behavioral issues. So, that's going to be from the 3rd through the 7th. Transportation, I want to let everyone know, we have received three of our seven new buses. They've come in. They're actually being utilized right now. The four remaining buses from this year's order are in Orlando, getting mobile data terminals, tracking devices, and camera systems installed. We expect to have those up and operational and in the county within the next two weeks. All of these buses have integrated car seats and, as well as enhanced safety features. 10 additional buses have also been ordered for next win, and they'll be here next winter, of which three have even more additional safety features, including lighted school bus signs and lighted stop arms, and those are key for the use in the east part of the county where light levels are low on the roadways, as well as at a number of our bus stops. So, taking care of that. Now, last week, the department started the Attendant-to-Driver Program. This program targets the bus attendants and the van drivers, encouraging them to move up to the level of a bus driver. We work with them on their CDL training. The Department of Safety and Training will be working with them for tutoring as well as working with them on their tests and their testing. We ended up having 13 interested employees, so we hope that they will be future bus drivers. And we like to have the organic growth within the transportation department. In the consent agenda today, there are a couple of major GMPs that you approved, guaranteeing maximum prices. Williams Elementary School, that eight-classroom addition, and that's scheduled to be completed this fall. So, that's, construction is going to commence immediately. Artisan Lakes and Ry Ranch Elementary Schools. You approved the GMP, which is an early-release package that will allow us to purchase a number of equipment items that are long-lead items, some in excess of seven, eight months, so that we'll have them in order to accelerate construction. And it also allows us to start some site work at all those campuses as well. So, I appreciate that. Thank you for your support. That's operations.
Awesome. Thank you. Love hearing about green beans.
I have a quick question.
Yeah?
Mr. Rinaldi, what is an integrated car seat? What is that? I think you mentioned that.
It's actually, it's, well, think of the standard car seat is an add-on, strapped in. These are actually dedicated seats made for the younger children.
Okay. So, it's like a car seat in the seat?
Yep.
Okay. Great. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah. Legal?
Yeah, a couple of updates that are related to Mr. Rinaldi's report. Artisan Lakes, real estate closing is in process. In fact, the chairman and the superintendent and I, after the meeting, are going to sign closing documents. And with Ms. Sellers' help, we may be transfer funds tomorrow and actually close it tomorrow on Thursday at the latest. So, that was a, it was the last property that the seller had in the county, so that was a cash transaction. They did not need or want impact fee credits. And then, Ry Elementary, which you've heard about regarding the construction and the bonding, should follow within about two weeks, we're hoping. We're very close to having all of the documents, closing documents, worked out. And that will be an impact fee credit closing. So, that's all I've got.
Quick question, Mr. Dye. When you say the bonding, what do you, I know what a bond is, but I mean, what are you, in this situation, how is that relevant?
They are, they are related to the next COPs.
Okay. So, we're going to use some of that money to pay for the Artisan, or the Ry Ranch transaction, right?
Yes.
Arts. That's what I was curious about. Just trying to get the finance thing down, you know? Keep learning. You've got that much to learn, I've got about that much. All right. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Good. Cool. Dr. Weisong, your superintendent remarks.
Thank you, Chairman. Board, thank you for your approval of tonight's consent agenda. We gave you a large consent agenda last meeting, so we lightened up this time. You had 13 items in front of you. Two highlights, tonight you approved the contract with the district's new external auditor that will begin July 1, and that is the auditor who reviews all of the annual financial reporting and ultimately generates, which ultimately generates the annual comprehensive financial report. That group also handles audits of our school internal accounts. So, we appreciate your approval there. And then, you also approved the staff submission of a school safety grant to the Florida Department of Education for just under 3/4 of a million dollars to continue with some of our confidential school safety upgrades. So, appreciate your approval there. Since our last meeting two weeks ago, I have attended a couple of trainings and meetings organized by the Florida Association of District School Superintendents. Those are required in my employment contract with the board and certainly find that time useful, not just for the concepts that are covered, but for the opportunity to dialogue with other superintendents, because we're all facing the same challenges in our work. One of the evenings last week that FADS was meeting, I was able to slip away and attend the girls' soccer state semifinals. Lakewood Ranch played in that game. And although the outcome was not in Lakewood Ranch's favor, Board, I was so incredibly impressed with the sportsmanship that our team displayed, some of the best goalkeeping I've ever seen against a really challenging opponent, and just an awesome, dedicated coaching staff. Also, want to note, Principal Dalquist and several members of the faculty drove from Bradenton over to Polk County for the game, and then drove back afterwards, and were back in class the next morning. So, thanks to the Lakewood Ranch High admin and faculty for supporting those students. This week, I had an opportunity to go to Maica City Elementary with Mrs. Felton. We had a great visit there and enjoyed seeing instruction. This morning, Vice Chair Spry and I visited Palmetto High School prior to the ribbon-cutting event that we all attended. And Principal DeLezline gave Mrs. Spry and I an opportunity to interact with five individual students. And we got to talk a lot about college and career planning, the ACE program, the academic options that are available. We talked about why students and families make the school choices that they do, how we can better market the district, and just, and some school safety topics as well. So, just a shout-out to Adeline, Caitlin, Elijah, George, and Michaela. Definitely my favorite moment of the week so far. And then, tomorrow morning, we'll be at Lee Middle School, visiting there. And then, board members, later this week, I will host, along with the leadership team, 49 of our graduating senior student leaders. And they will be giving us feedback and input on a variety of topics that we use to shape our future plans for the school district. So, we're really looking forward to that experience. It was awesome last year, and I'm sure it'll be great again this year. Board members, a reminder that this Friday, the 28th, we have a two-part workshop. Part one is a training session with Carol Cook from the Florida School Boards Association. That will run from 10:00 a.m. until about 2:00 p.m. And then, at 2:30, we'll be meeting here in the boardroom for you to receive the annual report from the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee. So, we'll have a full day on Friday. And then, finally, as we move into March next week, just a reminder to the board and also to our families that there are three calendar modifications during the month of March as a result of all of the lost instructional time from the two hurricanes in the fall. So, Friday, March 7th and Friday, March 14th are early-release days. So, we'll have two back-to-back early releases, Friday, March 7th and Friday, March 14th. And then, Monday, March 24th, which was previously a record day, is now a full student attendance day. That is the Monday after spring break. And we'll be reminding families of those changes through district messaging. And then, I know that all of our principals plan to send reminders to their families as well. That's my report for this evening. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. All right. Board comments. Mrs. Felton, Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Tatum, Mrs. Spry, myself. So, Ms. Felton?
All right. I just wanted to mention, I went to the Embracing Our Differences art display in downtown Sarasota. If you've never been there, it's amazing. It features art from people all over the planet. This year's, let's see, I've got the book, if you'd like to see it. But this year's art includes, or exhibition generally has in the realm of 4 million visitors. The submissions for 2025 were 10,124 submissions, are all submitted to Sarasota Embracing Our Differences. And they're from 511 schools, 46 states, and 122 countries. And one of our own kiddos, her name is Sydney Horton. She's a sixth grader at Buffalo Creek Middle School. She submitted a statement. And what they do is they have beautiful artwork, and then there's a statement that they match with the artwork. They're not submitted together. The committee puts them together. And her statement actually made it into the final display. So, it, the painting that it accompanies is called "Our Differences Are Not Caged", and that was by an eighth grader out of Cerritos, California. And Sydney's quote that is now emblazoned on that is, "Accept the difference, embrace the difference, be the difference." And so, I just wanted to point out that that was one of our kids as well. And then, another student, Jesne Diaz, a third grader at Louisa R. Johnson, Louisa R. Johnson, K-8, was a runner-up for her piece of art called "Same But Different", which features a football and a soccer ball walking and holding hands. If you'd like to see those, I have the book. You're welcome to come check it out. So, I just wanted to highlight that those were two of our students as well who were participating in the arts locally. Just a couple other things. CSAB, we have whittled down our, all of our grant requests. It's actually 68. Several people had saved their requests, and it doubled and tripled, and, you know, so it's all actually one request. So, it's now whittled down, sorted out. There's 68 grant requests now coming through that we are going to be whittling through to approve over the next two months. We're already underway with that. I wanted to let you know also that in the last two weeks, I have gone to the MTC Open House, met with representatives from Project Heart to learn more about that program that helps our homeless and unaccompanied students. It's an incredible program. If you don't know much about it, I recommend you learn some more. Also, I have gotten the opportunity to visit Horizons, the Harley Center, Buffalo Creek Middle School, and did a tour at MTC East, which I had not gotten to visit. So, it was nice to see that before we did the ribbon-cutting today as well. I will be at the FSBA workshop tomorrow in Hardy County as well. And that's about it for me.
Awesome. Thank you. Ms. Kennedy?
Heather, did you get to do the shooting simulator at the law enforcement academy?
No, I didn't have time.
Oh, that's Captain Romine. So, the last time I did a tour there, I got to do the shooting simulator, but he would not put me on the driving simulator.
I don't want to do the driver. I will get sick.
That's what he said. He's like, "You're going to get motion sickness. Just trust me, don't do it."
Yeah, we don't need a simulator.
True. I just want to thank the board and the superintendent for indulging me with a slightly different invocation tonight. Judy Bayer, who is a retired teacher and administrator, and Fran Paget, who was here tonight, they, I didn't know Mr. Schneiderman, but they brought his passing to my attention and how much he meant to the district. And I think that showed tonight, because when we finished the invocation, about 25 people got up to leave. It's like half the room emptied out. So, I just want to thank you all for letting me do something a little bit different with that. As always, want to thank everybody who put the meeting together. You know, we, this might be a record time for being out of a regular board meeting.
You got my comments, Ed. Don't.
Yeah, I don't want to jinx anything, but, you know, we were here for a pretty quick meeting, but it takes hours and hours to put this all together. And it's just all this, you know, all this good news we're getting, financial good news academically, it's just really, I'm just really proud to be up here with you all. And I'm looking forward to Friday, because I'm, you know, it'll give us a chance to kind of step out of this vibe and step into something totally different, where we can just talk and get to know each other a little bit better. And I think it'll, it'll really be beneficial to our working relationships, and I'm really looking forward to that on Friday. So, that's it for me. Thanks, Chair.
Awesome. Mr. Chair?
I only got two or three pages here, so like I said, I'll make it. I'll get started here. Now, I only got three items. Number one, safety item for this meeting. Unfortunately, my wife showed me a story about down in Sarasota. I guess a couple of weeks ago, there was a young mother. She was hitting a sidewalk, walking her two children across the street. And then, that reminded me, unfortunately, if you remember back in June of '23, we actually had a teacher that was hit in a crosswalk. And I've been actually starting to do some evening walks. And I went to Amazon, and I said, "Find me a safety belt," right? And they have these, like, little cool safety belts, and you wrap it around yourself, and you charge it, and it flashes and stuff like that. So, if you're going to be out walking at night with your kids, or your dog, or yourself, because both these accidents happened at night, you know, think about putting something on that's flashing, even if just your phone. Turn your phone light on, and, you know, put it in a holster, and so people can see it, because it's just a shame to lose people, you know, in situations that really don't have to happen. So, think about it, if you're out there walking around, especially at night, make yourself lit up so people can see you. And then, yes, the MTC firing range, I think that's already been mentioned, but that, the ribbon-cutting was today. And one of the great things about that was the fact that we did a great job working with the city of Bradenton and the police department and MTC. And that's government working together well, which doesn't always happen. But that was certainly a success story. So, we should all congratulate, not ourselves, but the people who actually did that work and got that done. It's a beautiful facility. And then, I know in talking to Dr. Weisong that this is prime time for classroom instruction, right before spring break. So, just encouraging teachers to stay focused. And I know spring break's coming, but between now and then, hit the books hard and keep the students focused and make sure we're doing some good instruction in the classroom. And that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Spry?
Our trip will be pretty brief. The trip today, when I left the house this morning, I told my husband this was going to be a 7:00 a.m., 7:00 p.m. day. We're pretty close to it. So, the students at Palmetto High was probably to the highlight of my day. It was really nice to sit there and talk to these young people and hear their future plan. It's just, it's amazing how, how much they, kids are today, how they're developed, how their mindsets are, their career paths are already set for them. And they, I mean, I would have never thought of that kind of stuff that they do today. But that was a great trip. It was cut short. We were there a little longer. It's why we had to hold up at MTC, but that's okay. It was all good. I'm trying to see what all I did. It's hard to compete with all that. Tennis season has started. I went to Southeast for practice and watched the boys and the girls work there. They got a pretty good team. I saw there was only one boy that was not there, and several of the girls wasn't there. Also, went to see Lakewood Ranch tennis team practice. So, I'm still trying to get my punch list that I turned in last year for these courts and little work. Some of it's small, some of it's a big ask, but I'm hoping that that'll get some attention in operations and maintenance. Some of it's just simple things. I think we need to get those things done. Other than that, thank you, Board, for, again, another good meeting. And the week isn't over, obviously. And we'll see what we learn new with this round with master board training. Thank you.
I just thank Dr. Weisong's staff. Like Mr. Kennedy said, you know, we get up here, and we do this and say yes, no to things. And it takes time and a lot of time and effort from the staff. So, I really appreciate that to Ms. Sellers and your staff. I mean, you know, I know we kind of quickly went over the rating thing, and there wasn't a whole lot of questions. And some people out there might not completely understand what all that means, but it really means that we're doing really, really well. And that goes to you and your staff. And so, thank you for all you all do. And we're, like Mr. Kennedy said, we're in a very good spot. I mean, the district financially, you know, I know we're going into some, with this rezoning, some stuff going on. It'll be, there'll be some tension, right? There's going to be some emotion. And, but I think we're in a very good spot. And, you know, I think that the rezoning, it's something that needs to happen. And, you know, I don't think any of us up here, or anyone in the district, takes lightly what we're going to have to do and change some people's zones and things like that. But something that needs to be done. What, Mr. Tatum, agree with Mr. Tatum? The law enforcement training facility today, you know, that was like one of the first things in '21 when I came up, came on the boards, like one of the first things that was approved. And you see the drawing, you see the stuff like that, and you go out there and, and, you know, the impact it's going to have on the community, I think it's something that, I mean, we build these, we build... schools, and we go to ribbon-cuttings, we do all that. But that facility is going to, is, is something that is going to affect all of us in, in becoming a safer community. Our, our law enforcement officers are going to be trained better, have a place right here in Manatee County to be able to do that, that training. And then people are going to be envious of Manatee County, because not every county has that, right? And, you know, I'm a competitive guy. I want Manatee County to be the best in everything we do. And so that just adds to it. And it is a kudos to, and it, this, it wasn't us up here, it was years and years of making of the collaboration between multiple government agencies. And you're right, that doesn't happen very often, or you know, a lot. And, and that's, to be honest with you, I don't think that's a huge norm. And I think we're, it's pretty special here in Manatee County with the collaboration between, between all the government entities. So, with that, tomorrow's Politics and Pints, or Politics and Pancakes, excuse me.
Yeah.
The Pints is later on. That's an afternoon meeting.
The Pints.
That's when they come back, that's when they come back from, from-
That's after-session.
Session. Eat the Pints. But the Politics and Pancakes, I'll look forward to that tomorrow. And going to Lee with Dr. Weisong. On that, I look forward to Friday, too. It's going to be good to be able to step away and, and get away from, off the dais and, and have some interaction with each other that's not, you know, business-related. I think it was very good last time we went through it, and it'll be good again. So, look forward to that. On that, everybody have a good rest of the week. We'll see everybody, well, not everybody, but most people Friday.
All right.
We are officially adjourned.